File to order the work session for the Board of Supervisors. We are meeting in the hearing room on Melody Lane. Presenting air at thirty-eight, four, thirty-one dot O two H. Public will have access to the meeting room fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Roll call District One. Paul's being served. District Two.
Thomas is here.
And District Three, Antonia is here. For us today is Mr. Dan DeShawn, our Emergency Management Director, and he will begin explaining to us what he is going to let us do.
Yes.
What is our authority?
So we have two current documents, the Resolution from nineteen seventy-nine describing powers and authorities of the Board of Supervisors, and also a policy from twenty twenty, just prior to COVID, that is a corollary to that. It's an internal policy about how we declare emergencies and allocate resources. The Resolution from nineteen seventy-nine, it largely mirrors state statutes in Title Twenty-Six, which have changed since then. So it was well due over time to make some adjustments to this. And since we're adjusting resolution, I also recommend adjusting the policy. So I won't go through every single line by line, but to go over them, for each one, we have the original, a red line copy where anything that's been moved is read and lined through, and anything that is added is in blue. You'll see there's, just to begin with. Okay, on the, I'll go through the Resolution, the red line copy, to begin with.
Civil Defense and Emergency Services. Why did they change that? It's a bit of a dated term. We don't like wearing the little white helmets anymore with the big civil defense thing on it.
So Emergency Management is a bit more contemporary. I'd be okay with keeping it, but we'd be the only one in the state or country.
Yeah, conformity, yeah.
Emergency Management is really what the field is called now across the country. So that would change the title of the department, which we've been using Emergency Management, but looking at this resolution, it was, I don't believe it was ever formally changed. So we begin with our where-asses. In the statutes, talks about the many situations where this could occur or where it would be applied. And I felt it a little bit more contemporary, instead of listing all bad things that could happen to say all hazards, which could affect the health, welfare, preservation of property and safety of people of this county. Keep going. We updated the statutory references to Title Twenty-Six and the federal guiding documents of Robert T. Stafford Act, Homeland Security Presidential Policy Directive Five and Eight, which largely drive Emergency Management across the country. Those of all, the Stafford Act is from the eighties and is how public assistance is divided from the federal government down. Your presidential directives were after nine eleven, how we provide a unified response and recovery and preparedness. Again, the department name. And then we can get into the actual resolution here. It's largely mirrors Arizona by statutes Title Twenty-Six. Starts with definitions, emergency functions, management worker, hazardous materials, all straight from the statutes. Then Section Two is powers of the Board, followed by Section Three, duties of the Emergency Management Director. Again, these are all just revised to match the current active statutes. So powers of the Board talks about how any order, rule, or regulation becomes effective when it's filed with the county clerk. Restrictions on that. How we would declare a, an emergency. And specifically, the statute says if authorized by ordinance or resolution, so the county does need a resolution to allow the Board to declare an emergency. And we get into Section F. It talks about the powers of the Board, and that's specifically in unincorporated areas. That has changed a little after COVID, specifically excluding the ordering of a closure of business.
So the incorporated cities still have their own?
They would declare, that council or mayor would declare for inside the incorporated city.
They can do that separately from the Board.
So if the state declares an emergency, it applies to the whole state? But if the county declares an emergency, it doesn't apply to the whole county? It only applies to the unincorporated parts of the county?
Yes. I would ask, Denise, you're correcting me if I'm wrong. I don't believe the county board could declare an emergency within incorporated limit.
I haven't actually researched a particular question, but what we put in here, we went carefully over the statutes and what they're saying. So it's possible that's something that needs to be looked into a little bit more. I'm happy to do that if you want me to.
Mr. Crossley, I think that when the Monument Fire was going on, the Board of Supervisors asked the Governor to declare an emergency.
It does often happen that way because the county declaring an emergency, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. DeShawn, but doesn't necessarily create a path of additional money. It raises awareness at the state level that there's a situation happening in the county.
But it, yes, it also invokes certain emergency actions by the emergency.
But they can take, yeah.
Mr. DeShawn's department. Where you become like the county's scene control guy, right? You manage.
And we get into that.
Yeah, I got it. But what I'm saying is, but if the incident, in all likelihood, bears no sort of restriction to boundaries, right? You know, and you have a tractor trailer spill over and the chemical cloud goes rolling through Sierra Vista and Hereford and Palominas, that's the county, right? That's, you know, not, you don't have to wait for Sierra Vista and everybody to kick in before it's an emergency, right? The county would declare the emergency and that would apply to the affected areas, whether they're in a municipality or not, or they're not. That's what I'm just.
As I read it, every reference to the county in the statutes, it always says, or it lists separately city, town, or unincorporated area.
And also, we have IGAs in place, Mr. DeShawn can tell you about.
Okay.
Between different fire departments and.
Yes, the mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
I'm just, I was wondering how we demarcate everything if there's a big emergency.
That is a challenge where any emergency would naturally cross our administrative boundaries here. So I got something Denise and I can track down a little bit more.
Mr. Crossley, paragraph.
Yes.
Chairman of the Board shall have the authority to impose all necessary regulations to preserve the peace and order of the city and town and unfortunate.
Which one is it?
F.
Yes, and that is why we're having the conversation here. What I'm presenting is just what is in the current statutes.
Because you don't want people during or after the fact saying, hey, and we're going to do that. Like during COVID, the Governor doesn't have the authority to declare an emergency. But if they did, how did they do it?
And you see, the statutes have changed since COVID where they exclude the ordering of the closure of businesses. So that was a recent addition.
I kind of agree with Tom. No offense, I would love to wield the wands of power. But, you know, to be able to impose a curfew without a vote of the Board of Supervisors. I mean, that's a lot of power.
It isn't an emergency. I guess that.
Yeah, but it takes two seconds to get us on a team's call, get the three of us on a team's call, and just say, hey, we're going to declare an emergency. We want to impose a sunset curfew. Once it gets dark, nobody's allowed out after dark. All those in favor say aye, and you're done.
Frankly declare that everything is illegal unless you have a permit from Frank.
No, I mean, I get where he's, where Tom's coming from, because that is, you know, I mean, because theoretically, let's just say you call Sharon, Sharon calls me, I say, okay, and we're done. That's it. Say, hey, we want to do a curfew. Hey, okay, I'll call the chairman. She calls me up, hey, you know, Dan wants to do a curfew. Okay, curfew. I mean, that just seems a little.
I guess I'm wanting to make sure we give ourselves enough flexibility without having too much power at the same time of an emergency.
But yeah, that's right. So this thing hasn't been updated since nineteen seventy-nine. So what we're getting at here is this could be, if we were to approve this now, this could be, you know, ten, twelve years when none of us are here. And who knows who's in charge?
Again, getting the three of you together, we have to post an emergency meeting on open meeting. We have to then have another meeting after that emergency meeting to do this. I know you shake your head, but that is what we would have to bring in the clerk. There are certain steps, so. But you want me, I'm not saying we don't do it. I'm making sure you're aware. Time is of the essence.
It lists like some examples underneath there with the power the chairman has.
I think also it's a lot to read and be able to absorb. I, I, you know. So I, what is this? This is to.
This is just a work. You're not.
For feedback. So it's going to give you feedback. So what are you talking, when you were talking about, we would have to agendas, agendas if he called, there was a.
If there's an emergency. If there's an emergency and you want, I'm.
But tell me the rules. State of emergency, state of emergency. I mean, you can't sit there, put in an agenda and expect like six, seven days old, but now we're going to.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, you have, within open meeting law, it would be an emergency meeting. So we have to, we can post within less than twenty-four hours' notice. And so we would have to do that. We would still have to post that we're having an emergency meeting. We have to say why we feel it's an emergency meeting. And then afterwards, we post additional information as about why it was an emergency meeting.
How about a twenty-four hour limit or something like that? Where maybe you can do it for twenty-four hours and then have to get Board approval.
Right, something, some qualifier like.
Yeah, not just.
Just can't imagine. If there's some kind of, if something's happening and you have to react quickly, and we have to, oh, we have to wait twenty-four hours before, you know.
No, no, no. I'm saying, we just have to bring in the clerk, post it, say it's an emergency meeting, follow those steps. Still, first thing. I, I don't understand.
It's a balance between how fast we want to be.
Okay, well, that's what I'm getting at. So to alleviate that.
Not too much power.
You say, in an immediate emergency, but then it has to be validated by the Board within twenty-four hours.
That would be.
Better.
Better. So that somebody's not taking.
Twelve hours or whatever, I don't know.
In fact, in the Monument, it wasn't the government that was amazing. It was the citizens that were amazing during the war. I mean, everybody was like hauling each other's horses around and doing everything that was necessary just as a community and the regular people and.
But let's just say, you know, we already had the, you know, the Chinese biological attack on the swamps before, right? Let's just say that there's some other real biological attack. I don't want, that was real, but I mean, a real is another, yeah, like an anthrax or botulism or something, where somebody poisons the water system or whatever, right? And you have to have an immediate answer to that, because it's going to save lives if you get it done real quick, right? And I could see your point, but you have to be able to respond to that quickly, right? So, but then just giving, it doesn't give you a time period in here where the Chairman of the Board, and God knows who that could be. It could even be me. Who knows? I could, I could, I can get power hungry and, you know, just say, hey, I'm going to impose a curfew where all residents will be shot after dark.
Can we come up with a better example?
But what, but what can I say, right? That's what, you're giving the Chairman a lot of power.
So, Mr. Chair, I've put up the statute.
Oh, okay.
If you guys, that's kind of it in a nutshell for the emergency powers of the county.
And it's right there. It says Chairman of the Board.
Doesn't mean it's constitutionally, just instead of.
Yeah, Ms. Goldman is correct. There would be an emergency meeting to declare that emergency, but that can be done pretty quickly.
So it's just, it's a step versus just calling the Chair if it was a true life or death emergency.
I mean, statute aside, that's great. This is a resolution, which we can put whatever we want here.
Well, you have your powers.
As long as we're not going against the statute. But if we want to add to it, can't we add to it?
Can you put a qualifier on there?
Yeah, can I say, you know, within twenty-four hours, the action of the Chair shall be approved by the Board within the twenty, twenty-four hours, or rescinded, can be rescinded or whatever?
So the statute is going to be a ceiling, right?
It's going to be one.
It's a ceiling to what authority you have. If you want to do less than that, or you, you know, want to direct like the process, that's okay. It sounds like you're talking about process.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
And then somebody else could question. So down on Douglas, some ten streets from the border, and something happens. You know, there's, whatever, let's just make it, I don't want to say epidemic. We're saying all of a sudden, people are coming with guns across the border. Do I, as because I'm not Chair, would have to, what's the process? Do you, do you go into that? Like, would I then call the Chair and say, hey, there's, there's an emergency here, right here in Douglas along the border? Maybe doesn't know up to business, it's in our area. And then does the Board of Supervisor have to do that? Or just the Chair, or would I call you to call him to say that there's an emergency? Does that, can you guys kind of talk about that in here?
Well, per statute, it's the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. But not true, but a real emergency reporter, we would call nine-one, and that would go to Douglas Police Dispatch. And if it's inside the city limits, it would be up to the Douglas Mayor and Council to declare emergency.
But city limits is very, not that very, okay, so like my sister's just right outside the limits, and it's over in, let's say, Slaughter's Ridge, as you can visually see there. So that's the county, right?
Yes.
So then where would it go to?
I think nine-one. Yeah, call nine-one-one if you're seeing that kind of emergency. We're more emergent.
This is for a large scale emergency.
Yeah, like a big plane crash or something.
Yeah, and not an acute nine-one-one call or domestic violence or a tanker tips over in the.
Serious. Let's just use like all of a sudden the border's being swarmed, whether it's a biological, people, whatever. Who takes that call? Nine-one-one then goes to where? Does it ever come to the county if it's going outside the city limits? How does it get to the county? Does it get?
It would go to CCOM Dispatch.
Okay.
Based on the circumstances, they would call Emergency Management.
Okay, and then Emergency Management calls the Board of Supervisors, or you let us know?
Yes, through Sharon, say, hey, there's a bad situation. Maybe it's time for the Board or the Chairman to think about declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
But to go down that rabbit hole, there's, we would declare, I described, there's two reasons. One is on the objective side that says the county is declaring an emergency because this emergency is overwhelming our capacity or resources. We need help.
Right.
That does happen. But on the subjective side is this emergency has hurt the community, and we feel like we need to declare it to say it's an emergency. Many emergency declarations are just to say that it hurt the community, and we want to declare it to let our residents. It's more rare for us to actually say, we're declaring an emergency because we need help from two. We need construction equipment, domes or firebombs. We need actual supplies and equipment from outside of the county. So there's two sides of that. Most often, it's subjective. And I'll use an example. There was, the last declaration was flooding in Alfreda and St. David. It was a terrible situation, but the county didn't run out of resources. Forty home, forty, fifty homes received damage, which is tip.
But the.
But nobody ran out of resources.
But they declared an emergency?
Yes.
So Ann English declared it?
Yes.
And the Board met with a resolution to declare it.
Within how much time after she declared it?
It was after the flooding, and it was, it wasn't a unilateral.
So it was a couple of days later?
It wasn't. Several days.
Several days.
To clarify that one, I think, I don't think, if I recall correctly, Supervisor English did not just declare it outright. We had a, we did have an agendized meeting where the Board had a resolution. We had that time. It wasn't that kind of emergency.
So it was just like insurance purposes, or sometimes when you declare an emergency, right, then they get extra consideration or whatever.
Yes. So there are those circumstances as well. Or maybe there's certain federal grants that need a local declaration.
Something thrown in within twenty-four hours or as soon as practicable.
I, I, just to, just to check it.
Since it's, you know, it's up to us.
And again, as Paul said, this is the, the statute's the ceiling. The Board can restrict themselves further if they see things here in F-one to four, saying, we don't ever want to do that, or then we can take that off.
So this is a three o'clock in the morning phone call because a plane crashed or whatever. You get your, all right, we close off the area. All roads in this area are completely shut down. That comes to me, I say, yes, there's all the roads down. Then the next day, we can have a Board meeting, and you guys could review that decision and vote to support it or to rescind it. That's what I suggest. Could we get to add that in there?
I get twenty-four hours.
Yeah, or as soon as practicable.
Chairman, I always suggested you define what you mean by as soon as practicable, because you can't expand your powers beyond what they have given to you in the statute. You can take something less.
Well, that's what I'm doing. I'm taking power away and giving it back to the Board. So, so again, like the example, what I'm thinking is, like I said, say, a plane crashes three o'clock in the morning. We need to close down Davis Road and Frontier Road and Central Highway there, right? And we need to call additional resources in from Sierra Vista and Benson to come help, firemen, firemen or whatever to come help. You need permission to do that. Okay, you call me, I say, yes, do it. Okay, and then as soon as practicable would be the next morning or late that next afternoon. But it's within the twenty-four hour period or as soon as practicable. As soon as, as soon as we can call a Board meeting, like we talked with Sharon. That's what I meant by as soon as practicable. Whichever is less, I guess, twenty-four hours or.
Well, there's, there's still like open meeting law requirements, so you're going to have an emergency meeting, right?
But it gives time, that, that way that gives us time to do that. And then we have a Board meeting, and then the Board could review decisions and then validate them or rescind them. That way there, we don't have anybody running wild for more than a day. That mandate, and no guns allowed. And, you know, that's what I'm worried about, because you don't know who the Chair could be. They could say, hey, you know, like they did during Katrina, right? They said, nobody's allowed to have guns during Katrina. We're going to confiscate everybody's guns.
I think that's a good example when we talk about emergency services or police and fire and then emergency management. It's less that acute incident of, oh, the border's being overrun tonight. It's, oh, that hurricane's climbing up the Baja, and we're going to get that once in a fifty-year storm where we're going to get twelve inches of rain. And we see it coming, and we can say, Public Works can fix, you know, five roads a day, but they can't fix every culvert in the county after one giant storm, where we would see this coming. And we could say, in that case, yes, our Public Works Department would be overwhelmed and exceed, in this situation, would exceed our local lease room. In the same manner, COVID was a slow burn that slowly came over time. So, that's true.
So you're supposed to have mask bending.
So how about transmitting requests to the Governor? Is that in here?
It is not.
It is not?
But every declaration we send up, the State of Emergency Management and the Governor, we could add that.
To request assistance or emergency funding or something?
And declaring necessarily doesn't bring more funding. Sometimes I describe in a crude way where if you, if, if you declare an emergency, that means you can spend your money and adjust your procurement rules to fix your problem.
But it's also a way to get.
And they didn't anybody else give you.
No, I mean, even, even if the Governor declares an emergency, it's reviewed by the federal government, and they determine whether or not they're going to get fund. Just because the Governor declares an emergency doesn't mean she's going to get, or he's going to get money.
Exactly.
But it would, it still sends an emphasis that our resources are going to be impacted negatively. Could we get some appropriations to assist the county, offset the cost that was not foreseen or something? You know, but something that we notify the Governor, and in that request, we could say, we need road resources or funding or whatever.
And that is traditionally the public assistance, where if we declare and we experience a large financial liability, and the Governor agrees and declares, then there's a pot of money that the Governor's Office could reimburse the county up to seventy-five percent of what we've spent. So it would make you whole.
And I noticed you take away a lot of authority from yourself on this last page. Pretty much wiped out everything that you can do.
You know, I just updated it to the statutes.
Okay.
My role, I think, is more just declare, describing the policy. Yeah. But getting into the next section, Section Three, duties of the Director. Again, it changes from Emergency Management Department, and then it matches the statute about accepting aid or mutual aid from others, and then the statutory requirement of this department, not necessarily a position. Appropriate and expend funds, make contracts, obtain and distribute equipment, materials, and supplies, provide for emergency management within the county, which is your day-to-day. Again, day-to-day, organize, administer, and operate the local emergency management programs. Take action as necessary to carry out the provisions of the state emergency plans, development of additional plans. In these states, I've been taking other plans and grants to the counties. And then the last two, or the second from last two, maintain a list of public and private organizations within the county and inventory of facilities, equipment, and supplies. So we have these lists of organizations, facilities, equipment, supplies across the county. They can be used in an emergency. And then we also report those up to the state annually. There is a lot of red there, but I think the substance is still the same. Enforcement, that is, the Sheriff's Office is there, the law enforcement authority of the county. And those were the recommendations for this resolution to match the statutes. And I have the notes. You add something about the twenty-four hour that needs to be validated, approved by the Board as a whole. And then make a note about transmitting our declarations to the Governor's Office.
Okay. Any other comments for Dan?
My, my top concern is abuse by the government, and that is citing the best and sincere wishes from people like Mr. DeShawn. For instance, Karen Phan failed to rein in the Governor's declaration of the emergency of COVID and put it in an email to everybody in the legislature. You know, if you, if you try to rein in the Governor's emergency powers, you're going to lose all this millions and millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
So it's the opposite situation where they're actually using a whole bunch of free money to get people to acquiesce to, this is an emergency. It's the actual, big long story. But anyways, that's my, that's my primary concern is that, like, history is replete with examples of.
Well, they did, they did restrict her, well, they, he was Ducey at the time. They did restrict him after that. The legislature changed it to, was it thirty days? Did they get thirty days?
We have to look it up, but there were some.
Yeah, they did, they did change it because of that very reason.
But the, but the terror was what?
Yeah.
Every legislators, look at all millions of dollars.
Yeah, all the hospitals are going to get billions and, you know, the health departments, yeah, yeah.
And there are a lot of layers when there's an emergency. We can only focus on what our county can do.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want us to be the piece of government.
Well, I mean, to the point, that's why if we do within twenty-four hours, then the Board gets involved, and then we, we govern as a body. So then we can deal with that when, if there's ever another Chinese biological warfare attack down the country.
Well, let me say this about that. So after the Monument Fire, there were at least, I don't know how many so-called after-action reports at the, at the new Palominas School. new Palomina school. And after those after action reports, it was very clear to me that you cannot be prepared to be ambushed. That's why it's an ambush.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's the reality of it. Not that we shouldn't try to prepare, but you can't be prepared for every possible thing that could happen. Or you'd have a ridiculously gigantic government like.
Yeah, and everybody being wrapped in bubble wrap. Yeah, everybody be wrapped in bubble wrap.
Yeah.
And the policy, sir?
Okay.
Uh, so the policy is more how we deal with this internally with department directors, elected officials and county administration. Declaration of emergency, again, we're matching the text that's proposed in the resolution, updating some references to the chair of the board and emergency management, not services. So here we get into the meat and potatoes, the allocation of resources and personnel. And I've divided this into two situations where it's emergency situations without or prior to a declaration. So we still have some uh, flexibility prior to that declaration and during a declared local emergency or state of emergency. So prior to, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. So prior to an emergency, um.
Just dark real now?
Wow.
Holy cow.
We've been here that.
You guys better pass this quick.
Got really dark.
You got to pass it fast.
All right, sorry.
There you go. Yeah.
I threw your mojo off. I apologize.
I was flowing. So here we're talking, uh, county administrator and the emergency management director, specifically those appointed offices where we emphasize elected officials may choose to make their resources and personnel available. And then again, it lists this emergency situation must be to protect and preserve life property and evidence. So there is a a burden there to reallocate resources prior to a, we've declared. Then we get into a, if there is a declared local emergency or state of emergency. Uh, so again, this would involve the reassignment of resources and appointed personnel and those under the control of the county administrator. Uh, and then we clarified the language about the the chain of command here. Uh, so the emergency manager will be the coordinator to assign these resources uh, within that incident command system. And then we talk about uh, resources through the county administrator or appointed will go through the county administrator and resource requests for, uh, uh, for employees or resource through elected officials, it will still be up to that elected official. And then department directors and elected officials will be regularly consulted and kept informed of events involving staff and resources. So this clarifies the chain of command, but still recognizes that those elected officials, uh, have autonomy, some degree of autonomy with their staff. Uh, lastly, we get into administrative concerns. Uh, we've just cleared up some names of the, uh, department directors. What, how we will track it, uh, how we could suspend paid time off. And I made a note here, uh, the last one have special revenue funds, uh, how that will be tracked and billed appropriately after the emergency.
So that would require us to make an appropriation. It is budget out of the, to authorize to take funds out of the emergency fund or contingency fund?
Essentially, yes.
Right. So we would still have a board meeting for that. And then we can direct how that's spent.
The largest example would be our public works, herf funds or solid waste. Uh, in some scenario, I could see a piece of, have the equipment doing something that's not typically herf or not typically at the, at the solid waste landfill.
Like you want to take a dumb stir and lay it across the road so nobody can go down the road?
Yes.
Block a road with it?
And then we would need to reimburse that special revenue fund.
Right. Out of the contingency fund, pay for the diesel fuel and the poor guy that has to sit in the truck while it's blocking the road.
Exactly. In the same manner, I believe the board uses community enhancement funds to pay for the wall offs.
Right. Gotcha. All right.
So those were my proposals. This policy was from 2020. It's a corollary to the resolution. I just thought it would be nice to make a few more things clear, but it's not.
When do you think you're going to vote on this? Twenty second?
We can do that. Make the changes you've recommended.
Three weeks, yeah.
Denise, enough time?
They made it 22nd or August 5th, one of those.
Oh man, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on that first week of August.
I just hope something doesn't happen between now and that.
We'll have to declare an emergency. They're running against the, you know, all those deadlines there. But anyways, so that's, that's cool.
So that's what I have. Thank you for the.
That's the resolution now?
Yeah.
It's been due since 1979, but.
Again, to Mr. Crosby's point, we don't know, who was the chair of the Board of Supervisors in 1979, right?
Probably.
Did they have any? Did they have any idea who was going to be here? Who was going to be there 50 years from now? No, of course not. So that's all, you know, taken into consideration. You might have a shift in the, the political dynamic in 20 years and you may have somebody else in charge that wants to ban everything and suspend habeas corpus or whatever, all regular. Yeah. Anyway. Claire martial law. And we could have the, you know, zombie apocalypse and they could use, it was an excuse to disarm everybody. So.
This is the old one, right?
Yes. All right. Anything else, Dan? No, there's not. All right. Any comments? All right, Rich, let me know.
So we can read it and kind of the questions I can just ask you.
Yeah.
Can you follow me now? I was saying this all the same.
So if there's nothing else, um, you know, we have our next meeting this afternoon at two, which is in 15 minutes. Uh, with Bill to have a discussion on site selection for the jail, which will be at two o'clock.
Hey, I need proof for this conversation.
What's that?
I need some stamina and some proof for this.
Oh, the next one. Yeah, yeah. Well, this, this, this would be to have the discussion on either more direction, to tell them to go look other places, other considerations. Yeah, this is not picking. Not picking.
I can see, can we have a vote or we might have to.
You're not, oh yeah, we need to turn. All right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So we're, we're.